Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Education Business Meeting to order Monday, March 13th. Everybody, please stand for the questions.
Athletic Union's Athletic of the United States of America. As you're a Republican, for which it stands, one nation, and freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Will Paul, John Ferber.
Here.
Michelle Kaiser is from Greenwood Lake. Matthew Buckley. David Clifford, who is of unfortunate passing today. Michael Williamsworth.
Here.
Tricia Kowinski. Here. Erin Novak.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, there's exits behind you to the left and to the right, and behind us to the right. Subject 2.1, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or amended at this meeting? Matt, Mike? Any discussion? All in favor? Passes 5-0. Subject 3.1, can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2023 business meeting as presented at this meeting? Matt, Patty? Any discussion? All in favor? Passes 5-0. Presentations and reports. Sarah.
Good evening. A very short presentation this evening, great. Just wanted to announce that we have our Board of Trustees election alongside our budget vote later in May. Any interested community members that would like to run for the Board, they would need to reach out to Mary Petro, who is our district clerk, to pick up a petition. In order to be eligible... In order to be eligible to run, a citizen must be over the age of 18 and live in the Greenwood Lake School District for more than one year. Petitions are due by Monday, April 17th, by 5:00 p.m. I actually see someone in our audience here. Ian Mahoney here has already turned in his petition, and we haven't even publicly announced that yet. So, good to see you here, and welcome to our board meeting. We do have two seats open this year. We have Mr. Matthew Buckley and Mr. Aaron Novak's seat. Mr. Buckley has announced that he is not re-running because he is running for village mayor, and his resignation is on tonight's agenda, but I wanted to take a minute just to say thank you, Mr. Buckley, for his hard work over the last three years. Is this gonna work? His hard worker over the last three years, he's done a tremendous job, serving first as Board Member, then as President, and has been on multiple committees and really contributed. So, thank you for your time and your effort. In addition, we have kindergarten registration right now. Mrs. Spinn, our Registrar, has been diligently working, trying to get our little kiddos and the families in. If you have a student that is going to be five by December 1st, please reach out to her so that you can register your child. Information about pre-K registration will be coming within the next month. Principal reports for this evening, we have Mrs. Connolly from the elementary school.
Good evening. This month, at the elementary school, students in Mrs. Getz's class began participating in a therapeutic horse riding program at the Winslow Center in Warwick. This unique, restorative, and empowering human horse learning experience has been in place at the middle school, and we are thrilled and thankful that the program is being introduced at the elementary level. On March 2nd, our school celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday and the National Education Association's annual Read Across America event. All classes participated in dear time, which meant they dropped everything and read just for the fun of it. Students brought in their favorite Dr. Seuss or other special book from home in a small blanket in town, and curled up in a favorite spot in the classroom, either on their own or with a buddy to simply enjoy reading a book that they love. We will continue to encourage this behavior with families next month when our One Book One School Committee, led by Edna Orfeal, will kick off our whole-school reading event. More details about this will be shared in April. Later this month, we have three community outreach programs that our students will be enjoying. First is a continuation of the Travel in Trucks history lessons presented by our local historical society. On March 27th, our third graders will learn about barn raising using the tools from past eras. The second program hosted by nonprofit group Local Greenwood Lake during the last week of March, weather permitting, will be a pea planting event. Our kindergarten and third-grade classes will buddy up and travel to the community garden on Poplar Street to help establish plants, and learn how the fruits of their labor will create a regenerative and resilient local food system for Greenwood Lake. Students will return with pea seeds and potting soil to plant, grow, and then observe, and this activity will link directly to New York State Next Gen Science Standards that call for kindergarten students to learn about what plants need to survive and grow, and Grade 3 students to learn about interdependent relationships of organisms and ecosystems. And the third program also scheduled for the end of this month will be a visit by representatives from the Warwick Rotary Society to read and provide the book Josh the Baby Honor to all of our kindergarten students. This book teaches water safety rules for young children who do not yet know how to swim, which is particularly important for our students to learn being that we live in a lake community. This past Friday, we held our whole-school kickoff assembly for PBIS. We celebrated our Students of the Month, who were selected for demonstrating excellent communication and listening skills, and introduced this month's topic, which is using coping skills to handle their emotions. Guidance counselor Natalie Nukiran and the PBIS committee worked with a small group of third-grade student representatives to explore this topic and create the presentation for all students to learn from. And lastly, March Madness is upon us, but I am not talking basketball. Orange County's Bozies, Bozies has been leading a four-part seminar series for their educators to be turnkey trainers in their schools to support the integration of the new digital fluency standards in classroom learning and teaching. Under the direction of Lena Polczynski, Jake Sheffman, and Christine Cologne completed this extensive training, and they, along with Lena and other seminar attendees, will be providing a complete series of March Madness digital citizenship training courses for educators throughout the county in the week to come. Very appreciative of Jake and Christine's willingness to take on this leadership role in the curriculum area and put us in a position of strength to fully support Greenwood Lake's staff and students with the implementation of these new standards in the upcoming year. This is my report from the elementary school.
Thank you, Mrs. Connolly, you're extremely thorough. And our middle school update, we have Mr. Kamar.
Good evening. Just to highlight some of the things that have come up since we saw each other last. Students of the Month for the month of February, our character trait is perseverance. And we are celebrating Lucia, Carmen, Keegan, Dylan, and Justice. That's our Students of the Month for February from each grade level, and March's trait is responsibility. The three pictures you see up there are three fantastic things that happened. The Yes Summit for Ashokin, our Odyssey of the Mine, and Greenwood Lake TA staff, where students' community basketball game. Our Odyssey of the Mine students, our mine board, as you know, who recently came out to support that new initiative. Students and Mrs. Greenberg worked so hard the last several months getting ready for the competition, and they took fifth place in the entire region in the first outing, it's really, really pretty remarkable. But I want to highlight for the board and the community that at the award ceremony at OAM, all of the teams come out, you know, and they go through each problem and recognize each of the place winners. Then they have some special awards at the end of the event. One team across the Odyssey, it might have been two teams, but Greenwood Lake, our team, was recognized for their outstanding sportsmanship, representing the spirit of the Odyssey of the Mine, and their helpfulness. And that's voted on by judges and coaches from other teams throughout the day based on the actions of the kids. So, what a testament to the work, the quality, and the effort, just a really, really great thing for our kids. So, thank you for your support for that, and then Mrs. Greenberg for all of her efforts. Shout-out to Mrs. Gosher, who led several of our students to the Ashokin, and the board also supported this initiative, Youth Sustainability Summit. And those students will be excited here in the near future to share all of the work that they did there and to bring back an initiative here to the middle school. Also, a big thank you to the GLTA and other wildly successful staff where students gained. They raised over $4,800 that goes to support the eighth-grade class and the eighth-grade scholarship fund. Just an amazing event for the community and to support our kids in the future. Coming up here in March, we have our March Madness, celebrating reading and literacy across America. We have a school-wide reading event where students are reading as individuals, as classes, and as grades to support students reading throughout the entire month. Also, the end of our third marketing period is upon us on March 8th. A reminder to families that there's no school for our students on the conference day this Wednesday, March 15th. Any progress reports will be sent home on March 16th. Willie Monka Jr., our Spring Musical, is at the end of the month, on the 24th at 7:00 p.m., that's a Friday, and on Saturday, the 25th, the production will go off at 2:00 p.m. And lastly, at the end of the month, on the 30th, our music students will take their annual trip to Albany. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamar. And that's my report for this evening, thank you.
I just want to go on top of what Mr. Kamar said about graduating Odyssey of the Mine and Mrs. Greenberg for their finishing their first event. I mean, that's really great, and everybody should be very proud of them. And I'd also like to thank the GLTA for putting on the basketball fundraiser that seems to bring out everybody in the town, from the elementary school all the way up to some, you know, I saw previous graduates that are now juniors and some seniors in high school. So, thank you very much for putting that on as well. And now, I'd just like to ask for the Facilities Committee, is there any updates? I guess we, the one big ticket item for the elementary schools, the one window needs to still be replaced, but supposedly we have the framing, and that's gonna get done. And there was one issue with one of the guards covering one of the foods, but that's gonna be fixed as well. And that's for the Facilities Committee. The Policy Committee. The Audit Committee. Budget Committee, we had our workshop last week, so I don't think we can cover anything there. Warwick, that is on?
I just have a message for the parents of all juniors at Warwick Valley High School to the students of the class of 2024. It's been recommended that your child makes an appointment with their guidance counselor to discuss graduation requirements, make sure you've been taking the right classes, if you owe any classes to graduate, any future courses needed, and any college questions, including scholarship information. So, the counselor should have sent out a link, if they didn't, you can contact your guidance, your child's guidance counselor, and make an appointment with them. They recommend that appointments are made before March 31st because scheduling is going to be happening right after that. And again, that's only for our students that are juniors, Carmen juniors, in the class of 2024. Also, today started spring sport tryouts, so we just wanted to wish good luck to all of our Lakers trying out for spring sports.
Chester? Nothing? I guess we're gonna have to fill that Chester maze there. Oxba? Your participant, seriously, my...
There's really questions, you think, and just students on the day at the...
And as far as Oxba, there was a pretty good presentation by the Orange County Youth Arrow Hero. If there's students who are looking for volunteer opportunities, definitely check that site out. It's got a portal that'll link you to some opportunities. It's budget season, not Bozies, so that big thing is, they're starting to get going. They're gonna have a virtual presentation on the 12th of April, and then the vote is the 20th. So, if you want to check out the virtual presentation that's coming up, just go to their website. Eighteen on February 15th, representatives from Oxba went up to meet with the legislature just to talk about some initiatives, and the general feeling is that, I got a good feeling that the legislator's gonna work with education and maybe the votes and funds. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed, we've heard it before, let's see what they're actually gonna do.
Village of Greenwood Lake.
So, I got an email regarding the become the Village of Greenwood Lake, she was unable to be here this evening, due to a conference with another village meeting. Actually, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the village board meeting is on Monday, March 20th, at 7:00 p.m. in the village courthouse. Further, on March 21st is the village election, where you can vote for the next mayor, Mr. Matthew Buckley, from noon until 9:00 p.m. Voting will be at the Senior Center on Wintermere Avenue. That's it, thank you.
Okay, privilege of the floor. Does anybody want to speak today?
Thank you all for your time. I'm just, my name is Ian Mahoney, I'm running for school board. A little about myself, I'm a lifelong Greenwood Lake resident. Third generation, actually, I have a fourth generation kindergarten currently, and one coming into kindergarten for next year. For the past 17 years or so, I taught at Bozies as a special education teacher, including my first year here at Greenwood Lake Middle School as well. I hope to bring that knowledge and my background to make positive changes in the community, and I thank everybody for their consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Ian. Okay, subject 6.1. I should read this, but I'd like to, a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Matthew Buckley as presented. Aaron? Mike? Any discussion?
I'd like to thank everybody.
Board, Sarah, Mary, for everything you guys do. It's been a pleasure working with you, really. A little sad, generally. I also want to thank all the teachers, faculty, staff, admin, everybody. I'm gonna miss it, but I know we're gonna work together in the future some. At this time, you know, Ian is here. I think I should resign by the end of today. You accept my resignation, we'll move it forward, and we'll appoint Ian, hopefully, and he could finish my term till May, and then see if he actually likes it and runs in May again.
Okay, well, first, I mean, I think everybody on the board appreciates everything that Matt has done, not only for the town, but the school and the Board of Education. And obviously, you can see where this is taking Matt. He's gonna hopefully be mayor of Greenwood Lake, so make sure you get out there and vote for him. So, thank you very much, and you know, I said it in a previous message, it's a sad day for the board, but it's a great day for the Village of Greenwood Lake. So, thank you very much, Matt. And then, I guess that brings me up to what Matt, you know, was just saying. I don't know if you're emotional, but... First, let me make sure, I want to see if Ian, is that something, Ian, that you would be willing to do? I mean, we would effectively appoint you, and then you would be on the school board until, you would still have to run in the May election, but you would take Matt's place, and then you would still run, and then still have to be voted in in May. So, you would attend, we have, what, two board meetings? So, you would, you know, you would be involved with two board meetings and board workshops up until then? And then, depending upon if you do get elected, then it would start all over again next year?
Yeah.
Okay, so, how do, does everybody else feel about that on the board? Is everyone... Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, I think it's great to have another person on board, considering how fortunate we've been, Matt. I have second motion.
So, I think first, I need to get, propose a change to Matt's resignation to effective close the business today, March 13th. So, can I please get a motion to approve that? Aaron really wants Matt back here. And so, Aaron, and then Mike, all in favor? All right, so that passes 6-0. Any discussion regarding that? Sorry, move it, sorry. So then, I, that brings us up to, we need to add an agenda item. To approve, it's a pushing agenda item. And what we do is, I'm gonna read a statement here. So, whereas a vacancy on the Board of Education currently exists due to the resignation of Board Member Matthew Buckley, and whereas the Board has the authority pursuant to Education Law Section 1709 to appoint an individual who is qualified to serve as a member of the Board pursuant to the provisions of the Education Law Section 2102 to serve as a member of the Board for the period of time through the next election of Board Members to be held on May 16, 2023, and whereas Ian Mahoney, a qualified individual, is willing to serve in the vacancy of the Board of Education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board hereby appoints Ian Mahoney to the vacancy on the Board of Education to serve as a Board of Education member from this day forward until the next election of Board Members to the Board of Education. So, after reading that, I need a motion to approve that? Is Matt able to vote? Because he's still voting. So, Matt, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? All right, so that, 6-0. So, Ian, welcome. There's some documentation that Mary will speak to you about after the board meeting is over, and then you can figure out a time. I wanted to meet with Mary tomorrow to get all that finalized. So, thanks again, Matt, and Ian, thank you for showing up and accepting. So, okay, so, subject 6.2. Can I please get a motion to approve the January and February 2023 financial reports? Should this be January, or... Can I please get a motion to approve the January 2023 financial reports and monthly warrants as presented? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 6.3. Can I get a motion to approve the retainer services with Shaw, Perrison, May, and Lambert as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 6-0. Subject 6.4. Can I please get a motion to approve the one-time purchases probation transfer as presented? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? 6-0. Subject 6.5. Can I please get a motion to approve the classroom materials and supplies of probation transferred as presented? Shell, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 6-0. Subject 6.6. Can I please get a motion to authorize the district clerk to publish the legal notices for the May 16, 2023 budget vote and election as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Subject 6.7. Can I please get a motion to establish rates of pay for election officials of the May 16, 2023 annual budget vote and election? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Subject 6.8. Can I please get a motion to approve the services cost of Orange County Board of Elections for the May 16 budget vote and election? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Subject 6.9. Can I please get a motion to approve the addition of Aspire Financial Services to the district's tax-sheltered annuity provider list as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 6.10. Can I please get a motion to approve the change orders for the elementary school cafeteria, cafeteria kitchen capital project as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Subject 6.11. Can I please get a motion to create a school monitor position as presented? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6-0. Subject 6.12. Can I please get a motion to approve the substitute cook rate as presented? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 6.13. Can I please get a motion to approve the health services contract with the Goschens Central School District as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 7.1. Can I please get a motion to approve the change in the title of Melissa Appuso as presented? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, 6-0. Subject 7.2. Can I please get a motion to approve the change in title of Jan Marie Forgini as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Passes 6 to 0. Subject 7.3. Can I please get a motion to approve the change in title of Or... Oraton as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 7.4. Can I please get a motion to appoint Kim Cross as substitute cook as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 7.5. Can I please get a motion to approve Scott Sullivan to perform food service accounting work as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 7.6. Can I please get a motion to appoint Ann Melly as long-term lead replacement teaching assistant as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 7.7. Can I please get a motion to appoint Kathleen Turner as certified substitute teacher as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 7.8. Can I please get a motion to appoint the following spring athletic coaches and assistant coaches for the GLTA contractual rate? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 8.1. Can I please get a motion to accept the CSE recommendations as presented at this meeting? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes 6 to 0. Subject 9.1. Can I please get a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding the... And please get a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding discussions, negotiations pursuant to the Taylor law involving the administration unit and advice from legal counsel. Matt, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, passes six oh. There's no action taken after executive session?